Time is seven o'clock. A call to order, the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September eleventh, twenty twenty four. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www dot Torrington C T dot org slash Zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You'd call in at one six four six five five eight eighty six fifty six. Meeting ID is seven ninety five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty five. Pass code is nine zero seven one four eight. Uh, agenda item two, serving on the commission this evening, uh, we're going to see Diane Carroll this evening. Uh, Donna Greco, Greg Parisino, servant remotely is Tom Tillman and Donovan Riley, myself, Greg Mealy, and also in attendance is the city planner Jeremy Lightford. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A for August twenty first, twenty twenty four.
I'll move the minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Time, you can't make a motion, uh.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Minutes?
Yep. All those in favor?
Hi.
Excuse me.
Favor.
I oppose, so moved. All right, moving on to agenda item number four, public hearings. The time is seven oh two. Public hearing beginning at seven PM, September eleventh, twenty twenty four, seven PM, City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A thirteen fifty five East Main Street Assessor's Map, one thirty seven block zero zero two lot zero zero five applicant Borgesi Building and Engineering. Proposal special exception twenty four dash zero nine and site plan application number fifteen twenty one. Construction of a seventy two thousand five hundred square foot mini storage building and associated site work in an LB local business zone. Serving on the commission this evening is Diane Carroll seated, Donna Greco, Greg Parisino, Tom Tillman, Donovan Riley, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is the city planner Jeremy Lightford. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission legal notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled public hearing, a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty four, in the City Hall Auditorium, three two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A thirteen fifty five East Main Street Assessor's Map, one thirty seven block zero zero two lot zero zero five applicant Rob Blanchett, Borgesi Building and Engineering. Proposal special exception twenty four dash zero nine and site plan application in fifteen twenty one. Construction of a seventy two thousand five hundred square foot mini storage building and associated site work in an LB local business zone. Time of hearing, seven PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco. Is the applicant in attendance?
For the record, my name is Rob Blanchett. I'm with Borgesi Building and Engineering, and we are representing our client on this approval.
Right. Word of green cards submitted, Rob?
I've got everything here.
And was a sign posted for the timeframe?
Yeah.
Required in our regulations?
Sign.
Put one side on East Main, another one on the fell.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Let's see, so the mail on this, um. So this is on the previous, uh, Torrington Ford site located on thirteen fifty five East Main Street. Um, previously, pretty much the whole entire site that's there was impervious surface. Um, to the tune of, there was only five thousand eighty eight square feet of green space with the layout that we're proposing. It is seventy two thousand five hundred square feet, but it's not spread out over seventy two thousand five hundred square feet. That's on, that's the total on the four floors, um, so eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty five square feet per floor, which now allowed us, instead of the five thousand eighty eight square foot of green space, greatly increased now to fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty eight square feet of green space, so about a quarter acre more of green. And the majority of that along both East Main Street and along Batel Street is going to be landscaped with a tree line buffer along there. Um, as far as, so I mean, we look at that as definitely an improvement. One, the building, as far as what was there, this is an improvement. The amount of green space is an improvement. The traffic for this project is very low impact. Based on the size and the amount of units that they have, it'll generate between probably twelve to twenty car trips per day. I mean, that's about the most of it. A lot of the people, they store something in there, could be in there for a year, and they don't visit it at all. So it's very low impact for the traffic. As far as the looks of the building, we went through architectural review. They were very happy with the looks of the building. We put a lot of masonry, a lot of glass on this. Changed the look a little, even though this is four stories, what we did with the glass was just to put two bands to give it more of a look of a two-story building, just to bring down the scale of it a little bit. Um, like I said, um, they were extremely happy with it. As far as zoning goes, we conform to all the zoning regulations for setbacks, coverage, um, the lighting. We did have to make some corrections on the lighting, but there, everything is full cutoff. Um, there were a couple of spots where the light went past the property line. That's all been corrected now, so it's, uh, zero foot candles at all the property lines. Um, like I said, everything that we've done here does conform, uh, coverage, I, everything is within the zoning regulations.
You're blocking off all of the, uh.
East Main Street.
Being blocked off.
Completely, correct? Yeah. If it was something that was a high-traffic generator, then we would have kept something on East Main Street, but with only twelve to twenty cars per day.
Right.
Um, very low.
Do we have elevation drawings?
I'm technologically disadvantaged, so I don't know how to make this happen. The, the colored elevations, yeah, the front, uh, do the front elevation and then the two sides. And that was one of the things requested by Architectural Review. We had glass across the front. We had it on the side facing Batel Street. The two sides, we had it at both corners, and they asked us, asked us to add another strip in the middle of those elevations.
And for the record, Starly Arius just joined the meeting also. Go ahead.
I do have hard copies of that, but they should be. Yeah, they should be in that.
That's the ARC ones, Jer. Go down. Okay.
Yeah, those should have been in that set, but I do have. Were you able to find them on there?
We don't have these on here.
He's got one.
Yeah, I've got an easel here.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Which way do you want this to face?
Facing us, please.
Outside face of East Main. Is this elevation? So the lower portion is all tinted split face block.
Try to get to the mic.
What's happening?
Yeah, step over to the mic.
The mic, oh, okay.
Thank you. So, this is all tinted split face block with standard tinted block accents that goes across around the entire perimeter. Where the window towers are here, there's masonry that goes all the way up to this height, splitting the windows. Um, then there's another band of windows across the front here, another band across the front here. The two sides are identical with two towers of windows on the front side facing East Main. One, another one on Batel, and then this side facing the east and west. And then on the side facing Batel Street. There again, it has three glass towers, um, not going the full height, but right up to this point, the split face block going up with the towers, and then on the other side, identical to what's on the east side.
And your elevators are internal, correct?
The elevator is internal. So actually, if you look at the floor plan. When you come in from the Batel side, where the parking lot is, you come in, and then the elevator is immediately in front of you at that point. And then three sets of stairs, one here, one here, and one here, but those are all internal also.
Then there's secure rooms or lockers, or what are they?
Pardon?
Those storage areas, what are they, how it?
On the inside, there are individual rooms, each of them with like an overhead door.
Oh.
Type setup to get into the rooms. They vary in size, biggest ones being twenty feet by ten feet, the smallest being five by five.
And it was how many units, five?
We're play, it's going to end up being probably around five hundred and sixty, because we have to take some of those interior storage units we're going to need for like mechanical rooms on each floors, because it is all climate-controlled heat and air conditioning.
That row of, um, mature trees that exists now, are those all coming down for new planting?
That, that we're looking into now, because the problem is, we're going to have to cut the limbs, because they're kind of right on the property line. We're going to have to cut the limbs that come onto our side of the property, and then it's a matter of, is the tree going to die at that point? So that we're looking into right now, how to handle that.
Nice to keep them possible.
Those are on the easterly side?
Okay, yeah. The westerly side, there's nothing, the pavement, right, yeah, it's just one big run of pavement right there, but now that'll be broken up with the grass in between the building and the, the other adjoining property.
Can you, I mean, that's five hundred units, that's, that's a lot of people.
Well, it's all, it's, don't forget, though, when somebody stores something, I mean, I've talked to a lot of people, parents die, they take their stuff, they put it in a storage unit, and that's where it stays. Nobody goes to take anything out. It's like, if you're storing something, it's long-term storage, it's nothing you use. So a lot of people, I mean, if you got somebody that went there to their storage unit once a month, once every few weeks would be a lot of visits, because if it's something that you need, you keep it in your house. It's, a lot of it is people who've moved out of the area, and they store their stuff there, just, it's long-term storage.
And then it goes on Storage Wars, Greg. Right.
Yeah, so I mean.
I, I recognize, like, that's five hundred of them. It's like, holy cow, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we've checked with other storage companies like that to see what, because they have the logs of everybody that comes in and out. And that's what they say, it's really not a big turnover of people coming in and out. What's that?
Can the building be repurposed?
I would say probably not, because it's built as all load-bearing walls on the inside of the building.
I'm just saying, if, if the financial case doesn't work out for whoever owns this thing, you know, it's five hundred units. I don't know how you're going to rent five hundred units, but I'm not suggesting I know, but I'm just pointing out that if financially the case doesn't work, and it's hard to float it. It'd be great if it could be repurposed, but if it can't be repurposed, then what the hell, why does it turn into?
What's their vacancy rate? Any idea, or no vac, you know, what's their?
I've never seen one like this.
Well, I have, I have, uh, the owner here, he'd like come up and talk, and just got to give your name.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Dave Utech.
Yep.
Um, I was just listening to what Rob said when we talked to Bristol Self-Stores, they have five hundred and twelve units, and he gets about fifteen, twenty visitors a day. But that's why we based our traffic count. They looked up and down, and it's pretty regular, that's going to be the traffic count. We did a feasibility study, and they said, Torrington's kind of under storage unit. Um, one of the franchises came to us, and they said, if it's, if it's, needs no storage, it's over storage, like they are down on the shore, it's seven. If you need storage, you're zero. They put Torrington at a two. They said, based on our population, the people around us, we should have about three thousand units. I think there was about three hundred and sixty or three hundred and seventy, um, quick Google search shows about two hundred and forty people a month, search and say, Torrington self-service, and right now they're going down to like Canton and Avon and whatever, we'd like to keep them local. So I'm, I'm predicting probably ninety, ninety-five percent occupancy rates. All the current storage in Torrington is completely full with waiting lists.
People have a lot of stuff. They do.
Yeah. Americans like to buy stuff.
Sure. Storage.
Any other commissioners have any comments? No. Jeremy, why don't you dive into your memo, please?
Rob Blanchett of Borgesi Building and Engineering has filed a site plan and special exception application at thirteen fifty five East Main Street, Assessor's Map one three seven, block zero zero two, lot zero zero five, for construction of a new seventy two thousand five hundred square foot indoor climate-controlled mini self-storage building with associated parking and site improvements. Property improvements are proposed for building construction, parking for eleven standard spaces, one van-accessible handicap parking space, and two loading spaces. Also proposed are improvements to site landscaping and lighting. The current traffic entrance to E, to East Main Street will be eliminated, and traffic is proposed to enter and exit to Batel Street. Previously, the property was an automotive dealer and repairer, Torrington Ford, and this use dates back to an approval for a dealer and repairer license in nineteen fifty nine, and continued to present, to present under various ownership changes. The property is currently owned by thirteen fifty five East Main Street LLC, is one point zero one acres in area, and is located in the LB local business zone. The proposed self-storage use is allowed by special exception approval under section three point one, subsection nine point three two, self-storage warehouse units. The review of this application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four, and the special exception review standards of section eight point two. A plan set has been submitted with the application titled East Main Street Mini Storage, thirteen fifty five East Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, prepared by Borgesi Building and Engineering Company, Inc., dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty four, eight sheets. Included in the plan set is an overall site plan, landscaping, lighting, detail, and architectural sheets. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, per notes on the parking table, on the submitted plans, the proposed parking is compliant with the zoning regulations, section five point thirteen point four. Two, there are currently vehicles displayed for sale, presumably for the Ford dealership at thirteen fifty East Main Street, on the opposite side of the street. If approved, this change in use will eliminate the motor vehicle sales and repair use on the property. I recommend that the vehicles be removed prior to the issuance of zoning permits to begin site work. Other staff comments. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, responded in support of this project on August sixth, twenty twenty four. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject property that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, section five point one one of the zoning regulations specifies that required landscaping must be composed of species native to the United States. European hornbeam, green giant, and spirea must be replaced with native alternatives. Suitable shrub examples include fragrant sumac, inkberry holly, and northern hayberry. Suitable tree examples include eastern red cedar, American hornbeam, and American red bud. Lighting, photometric plan shows greater than zero point zero foot candles at the boundary in multiple locations. The only permitted instance of light trespass is at the Batel Street built, as, is at the Batel Street building entrance, but shall not extend beyond the right-of-way across the street. Sinage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage must conform to section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this application was reviewed in an ARC meeting on August first, twenty twenty four. The committee was generally supportive of the site layout and building plan, with general comments on tree substitutions on the East Main Street side of the building, suggestions for window placement changes on the west side of the building, and locations for address marking. The committee agreed that the project is in general harmony with the designs of other buildings in this area of the local business district. The committee voted to make a positive recommendation on the proposed project and change of use to the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the comments noted above. The ARC minutes have been made part of the file record. Torrington Area Health District, this application was not referred to the T A H D for comments. Engineering, Paul Kunsen's City Engineer, provided a memo for planned review comments on July thirtieth, twenty twenty four, to be addressed by the applicant. See attached. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus completed his application review on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and offered the following comments. Is there going to be an entrance and exit onto East Main Street? It's difficult in the drawings as to the actual driveway, but appears there is a small in-and-out for about five cars to park. Does there need to be an additional ADA space in the front for access to the building if this is the case? Also, is there a spot for a dumpster, if there is one, or is that unmarked on the first drawing, the two clearly marked sections of parking? Those are my only comments for this plan. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta completed review on this application on July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, and offered the following comments. I would recommend installing a lockbox. We can provide the paperwork for the lockbox. We will require sprinkler system per fire code nine oh three point two point nine. WPCA, Edward Taucy, WPCA Administrator, provided comments on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, requiring that a sanitary sewer discharge permit be obtained for this project. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette offered the following comments for this application on July twenty third, twenty twenty four. Permits must be obtained from the Building Department for all work. Plans must be prepared by a registered design professional. Water, James Myers, Torrington Water Company, offered the following comments for this application on July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Water and sewer were retired for this lot. In making a decision on this application, the commission should refer to section eight point two, special exception, and eight point four, site plan review. In my opinion, the following standards from these sections are relevant to the commission's review of the project. Section eight point two point two point B point one. The site plan shall provide for a site design which is in harmony with the neighborhood, accomplishes a transition in character between areas of unlike character, protects property values, preserves, and enhances the appearance and beauty of the community, and provides a harmonious relationship between existing and proposed buildings in the vicinity, specifically with regard to the visual relationship in terms of scale proportions, and particularly the historic significance of the existing buildings. Eight point two point B point two, location. The location of the proposed special exception use is such that the proximity of the proposed special exception use will not have a direct, a detrimental effect on any church, school, library, playground, or similar facility found in section two to two point six of the zoning regulations of the Table of Permitted Uses, and the number of similar existing special exception uses in the vicinity is such that the granting of the proposed special exception will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Eight point two point two point B point three, traffic. Vehicular and pedestrian traffic projected as a result of the use, vehicular and pedestrian traffic pattern circulation, including traffic to and from and in the vicinity of the use, will not be hazardous or detrimental to the character of the zone or the neighborhood. In making its determination with respect to this criterion, the commission shall consider the proposed location, the size and layout of the special exception use, its nature and intensity of the operations involved, and its relation to the local streets providing access to the site, and the adequacy of proposed traffic flow controls and emergency access. The commission shall give due consideration to any recommendations by the city engineer regarding the adequacy of any public road proposed to be used for access. Eight point two point B point five, the location and height of buildings, the location, nature, and height of walls and fences, the nature and extent of proposed signs, exterior lighting, landscaping, and open space on the site shall be such that these features shall be compatible and in harmony with the adjacent properties in the neighborhood, will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of a date of adjacent land and buildings, or significantly, significantly impair the value thereof. Eight point two point B point six, the proposed use shall not have a significant adverse impact upon property values or appearance in the neighborhood, taking into account the topography of the lot and the character location and height of proposed buildings, structures, and landscaping. Eight point two point two point V point seven, the commission shall be satisfied that the applicant has shown the adequacy of A, proposed methods for disposal of wastes and the provisions for volume and quality of water supply, B, proposed measures for the prevention of pollution of surface or groundwater supplies and watersheds, C, proposed measures for control of stormwater runoff, D, proposed methods to foster an energy-efficient layout and landscaping plan, E, existing fire and police protection, transportation, water and sewer facilities, schools, or other public facilities to meet the needs of the proposed use. Eight point two point two point B point eight, provisions for signs, if any, and proposed exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic, safety, compatibility, and harmony with adjacent properties and the neighborhood. Eight point two point two point B point nine, provisions for open space and landscaping and other safeguards to be compatible with the adjacent property and neighborhood in general. Eight point two point two point B eleven, size, location, and quality of runoff from parking lot areas. Eight point two point two point C point two, the architecture, height, and size, and location of any proposed buildings, and the building's compatibility with the site and the surrounding neighborhood. Eight point two point two C three, the proposed, the proposal's long-term impact on the development of the surrounding neighborhood. Eight point two point two C four, the capacity, safety, and condition of the surrounding streets to accommodate the traffic generated by the proposal. Eight point two point two point C five, the adequacy and condition of all public utilities that would serve the proposed use. And eight point two point two point C eight, the impact, the proposal's site develop, of the proposal's site development, including parking lots, stormwater management, exterior lighting, landscaping, views, open space, and signs would have on the surrounding properties. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve special exception twenty four dash zero nine and site plan fifteen twenty one for a change of use from an automotive dealer and repairer to a self-storage facility and construction of a seventy two thousand five hundred square foot mini storage building and associated site improvements in an LB local business zone with the following conditions. One, per WPCA comments of July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, the applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, per comments of James Myers of Torrington Water Company on July ninth, twenty twenty four, water connections have been retired on this property, and the applicant shall obtain new approval for public water connection. Three, per July twenty third, twenty twenty four, comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project and submit the appropriate plans. Four, the applicant shall follow the comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four review comments regarding landscaping, lighting, and signage. Final plans for filing shall show adjustments to proposed lighting on the property and contain a compliant photometric plan. The applicant shall provide information on acceptable landscaping substitutions. An updated report from the Assistant Planner on these changes shall be provided to the City Planner prior to issuing zoning permits for construction. Five, plan shall be updated to address July thirtieth, twenty twenty four, comments from Paul Kunsens. from Paul Kunzins, City Engineer, regarding site plan details prior to filing of final plans. Updated city engineer comments shall be required prior to issuing zoning permits for construction. Six, per comments of the Architectural Review Committee at their August first, twenty twenty four, meeting. An address identifier shall be in a prominent location on the building facing both East Main Street and Patel Street over the entryway, as well as future freestanding signage. Seven, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained at the property entrance during construction. Traffic tracking on the paved portion of the access drive or public street shall be cleaned at the end of each workday during project construction. Eight, in review of the standards of section eight point two of the zoning regulations for special exceptions, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the proposed use, location, and site plan is reasonably protective of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the project area and the citizens of the city of Torrington for granting of a special exception approval. Number nine, zoning and grading permits shall be required prior to commencing work on the property. An erosion and sedimentation control bond shall be required to be submitted with the grading permit application. Ten, all vehicles displayed for sales on the site shall be removed prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits. Eleven, a certificate of a special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with C G S eight dash three D prior to approval of zoning or grading permits. And twelve, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the final, of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet, S P one, in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter for the commission from the commission, an engineer's seal, and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Couple of quick questions, the um. Is this gonna have bathroom?
Only gonna have one bath.
Just one.
Yep.
Alright, so obviously the water's going to the building. It's gonna be a wet system, obviously.
It is gonna be a wet system, so we would have, we would have had to have brought a new water line in anyways, because the one that was there would have only been a domestic size, and we need it for the sprinkler.
So there's no other fire pumps or anything going in? There's sufficient water pressure?
Yeah, there's enough pressure and volume.
Alright, so there's no generators taking up exterior space on the property and so forth? What was the uh outcome of the dumpster comment? Is there gonna be a dumpster on site, or that's?
No.
Okay, because it'll be filled all the time, probably. Okay.
And you, and you, sorry, you'd already said you updated the lighting plan.
Yeah, the lighting plan was updated. The landscaping was, um, the comments from the city engineer as far as the sidewalk on East Main Street, the curb, the catch basin. Everything's already been addressed.
My, my um memo that I just read predated, predated the adjusted plan set.
Days when they were submitted. And as far as the, the fire marshal goes, I mean, we'll put a Knox box, that's, I mean, that's pretty standard in Torrington anyways, is to do it.
So obviously with the sprinkler system, you're gonna have a fire alarm reporting panel for the sprinkler. Is any of the other parts of the building covered by a fire alarm, or just a sprinkler?
That's, that would be part of his security.
Okay.
Fire alarm system. Everything would be tied into one system.
Okay. Alright, any other commissioners have any questions or comments for the public?
It's gonna be all fenced in, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have, I have one question on those. I mean, obviously, these people are gonna be bringing things in. You're not gonna know what that stuff is. Um, the question I have is how do you control the fact that someone might bring in hazardous materials and store them?
I mean, also, it's like anything else. Alls you can do is post it that it's not allowed. It's like anything else in life. Don't speed. I mean, there's no way to guarantee that somebody's not gonna do it, but it's gonna be part of the conditions that they can't bring that type of material and store it.
Well, that's what I was trying to get to, is that somewhere there should be a liability issue, meaning that I just signed a paper that said, I promise I won't. There's gotta be something that this has been a kind of a pet peeve of mine for other storage facilities. Um, it's kind of an uncontrolled environment. You know, people just bring stuff in and throw it in there. They pay for their locker, or whatever you wanna call it. And then they put whatever they want in there, and I think that that can be problematic.
Isn't there an agreement that they have to sign, though?
Yeah, there'll be a rental agreement, say whatever it is. I, I know talking to insurance companies that the loss ratios on most storage units are very low in terms of fires and damage and this stuff, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, well, if it was common, there was probably a lot of people that would have already written it in and done other things.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is why not be proactive and write it in? You have an agreement, put it in there.
Sure.
I mean, the simple way to deal with it is to just say, you know, look, we don't accept any kind of hazardous materials, and you have to sign this, saying you're not gonna do that.
Sure.
That way there, if we find it in your locker, you're in trouble. Kind of, the kind of thing.
There's cameras inside and out.
Oh, there'll be cameras everywhere.
You can see, kinda get an idea of what people are bringing in.
Well, if they bring it in a box, we'll know what it is.
Right, but I mean, it's for most of the.
Alright, that's the only thing I was.
Unfortunately, this is an indoor facility versus an outdoor, where that you're bringing vehicles and snow blowers and plods and so forth. You eliminate all, all of that activity.
What are those hallways, four feet?
I think, I believe they're five feet wide. Everything ties into that. Ten foot.
Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? I'll go to the public. Would anyone, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Just let him step in.
And that includes anyone on Zoom?
They're just gonna need to go to the lecterns.
Would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And that includes anyone on Zoom, too?
Name's Kevin Perkowski, five eighty eight Torrenford West Street. Our driveway's um on Patel Street. And um I don't believe that the traffic's gonna be minimum to twenty cars a day. Um, the traffic level's gonna pick up dramatically. Uh, the street's already a little bit out of control with Torrenford School, parents drop off and pickup. Um, given the fact of the small parking area, uh, I don't see adequate parking uh for the amount of size of the building and then the number of units. I believe parking along the street sides is gonna be an issue. Um, also, um, given the fact of the increased traffic on the quiet street, um, there's children that live on that street with families. Um, kids might get hit by a car, uh, stuff like that. Also, another concern is the trees that are presently along um the nursery there, Coslax Nursery. Um, the gentleman that is presenting from Orgazie stated that they are going to trim the branches off of the tree, which is within their legal right over the property line. But we all know what's gonna happen to those trees is they're gonna die. They're older than anybody here in this room. And it's also gonna shade the greenhouse. Right now, those trees in the building that was there allowed for sun to come through for his greenhouse. That's his uh business, his livelihood. And that's gonna be affected by a four story building. Um, I think that the height of that four stories does not fit within um anywhere along East Main Street, two oh two, or anywhere in town for that special um. What was that called that you had? Mentioned the um for the special exemption?
Exception.
Exception. Um, there's no four story building really in town besides a few downtown, maybe. Even the glass building on the bottom of East Main that hasn't been kept that well from the exterior. Um, there's no repurposing of this building once it's a storage facility. Um, I'd hate to see it fail. There is open rentals at All Star, the South End, and the new ones on North Elm Street. Um, I think the height is absolutely ridiculous um for the area. It's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. And I don't understand um why it has to be that, that tall. Maybe it can go one story underground or something like that. But it's really gonna affect the neighboring areas there. And also, we have solar panels on the garage of our house. We're fifty feet from the property line. That's going to destroy our early morning to afternoon um generation of our solar power. So it is going to affect the neighboring um neighborhood. It does have negative effects to the neighborhood. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Zukowski. I'm a property um to the west of this development. And my concern is the Patel Street is a higher level than East Main Street. I don't know where they're starting to put the building, where it is, where the previous Ford station was, or they're gonna, you know, dig a little lower. But um over the years, because our property is really the only one with grass, everybody around us is more or less asphalt. Any of the storm um runoff from Patel Street, even from the property itself, because ours is lower, um, we get all the water. So I wanna be sure that there is um drainage along that property line that does not come on to twenty four Patel Street. Um, as I said, the property is not level. And Patel Street is higher, so any storm thing. And then um I'm not sure where they're going to put snow removal, because that was always pushed to the side, and we always got snowbanks. And even though it wasn't on the property, and plus, I think they're going to be building now closer to our property line, so there was a little bit of grass between our property and theirs, so there was some more green grass for the the ground to absorb some of that. And now I believe it's gonna be built right up to it, so I'm not sure what is on that border, whether it's shrubs or um on the design, I saw there was the building, which when I was hearing that it was mini storage units, I was picturing the one level looking like a little mini garage. I didn't think it was gonna be four stories. It does seem a bit excessive. Um. The neighbors on the other side of Patel Street are all residential. I'm sure they won't see sunlight anymore. Um. But because of the um layout, like I said, I really am concerned about water, snow, and where is it gonna go? Because, as I said again, our property is the only one with grass and over decades. I've lived in that property. My in-laws haven't been in it. They built that home, so I know all about that area for decades, and everybody uses it like it's, you know, pushing it to the side, pushing it to the side, but um even the other property, business properties on the left hand side, there's a little higher, they make a drain, and therefore, all the water is in our yard. So I just wanna make sure that none of that water comes into our yard. And if it does, I'd like to know who I can go to to get it corrected.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Kelly Duff, five eighty eight Torrenford West Street. Our driveway is on Patel. Um, I just want to oppose this very large building for the area. As Kevin, my partner, stated, there is no other building that large, especially in that area. Um, I also am concerned about the, our solar panels and the blocking of the sun, because we get morning sun and afternoon sun from that side. Um, also, Coslax is also going to be affected by this. He has a greenhouse there where he grows plants, and the sunlight will be blocked out. I'm also concerned about the traffic on that little side road. Um, because it's a side road, and it shouldn't be, have that much traffic. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Um. And I don't think you had mentioned that the building needs to be in harmony with other buildings in the area. Um, from the looks of the proposal, this building will not be in harmony with other buildings in the area. And I would like to echo um you, sir, you had said that it, the repurpose part of it. If unfortunately, the business does fail, Torrington is left with a big eyesore four story building. Um, and that's it. I think Kevin covered the rest of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? That includes anyone on Zoom? Rob, maybe you could come back up and uh discuss a couple items here. Was there ever a, a traffic count that was indicated from the previous use of this property back in the day? Obviously, it was a Ford dealership.
Been a vending building for sixteen, the Ford dealership moved out of there, so it's been empty for about eight years.
Okay.
Um, we did traffic study counts, the guy Henry, who does a lot of the electronic stuff, owns a bunch of storage units. And we're talking about the number of spaces we wanted. I think, I don't know if they got sent to you, Jeremy. But we have them, and this is the average units. This is how many people come in.
I'm saying, when it was the car dealership, I'm sure there was a lot more traffic coming and going back then.
Sixteen, because we bought it in twenty twenty four. What I could tell you now, in service, we probably get forty, fifty people a day. Um, and then in sales, maybe another five or six. We're probably flowing around fifty a day now with the Ford store.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's probably similar traffic back in the day.
And to address some of the drainage issues, obviously, you have this site designed with proper drainage.
Yeah, we do have proper drainage and just kinda um.
Do you want me to bring it up?
What's that?
Yeah, if you could. If you look at S P one, you'll see a light line on there, which is where the existing pavement is, then the dark double line is where the curved area is gonna be now. So, and that's what I was talking about earlier. There's gonna be a lot more green area than what was there before. I mean, it was like five thousand square foot of green area before. It's now gonna be uh fifteen thousand square feet, so there's there's a lot more on it than previous. And it's also gonna be curbed and I'll wait till you pull it up there. So if you look, you can see along that skewed property line, you can see a light squiggly line that goes all the way down. It almost goes all the way down to the point of the triangle. That entire area was all paved. We're gonna actually be bringing it in probably about another twelve to fifteen feet further away from the property line, except for that one leg where that turnaround is. Uh, but if you look at the grading, all of that is all down to a catch basin that's on the site. Previously, there's really not any catch basins on the site. So now everything is gonna be curbed. Everything is directed directly to that catch basin, picked in the pipe, and taken away from there. Um, so there's actually gonna be less runoff on the site now than what was previously there.
What are the hours of operation?
We don't want people there at night or whatever the heck it is. We gotta make it reasonable for someone to go there. So we're not a hundred percent, but if I had to take a guess, it would probably be like a eight AM to eight PM type deal, eight AM to seven PM type deal. Um, it's kind of the idea.
Because it's, you have what, card access to get in and out?
Everything's PIN pad, so you go to the gate, you put in the code, the gate enters, you go to your PIN pad, you put it in, it, it lets you in. So everything's gonna be PIN pad type stuff.
The uh street, does anybody know that, is there parking signs? No parking signs on the street?
No, but that's the thing. If anybody parked out in the street, they wouldn't be able to get in because it's all fenced, so there. And we've got.
What do you, it's all what?
Fence. It's all fenced in. But there's, there's twelve parking spaces. And if you're only getting twelve to twenty people a day, I mean, even if you had forty people a day, they're only there for a short period for one, but even forty a day, and you have twelve parking spaces, everybody's not gonna show up at one time. I mean, it's if, if you had probably three or four people there at one time, would be a little odd. And there's twelve parking spaces, plus the two loading spaces.
And there won't be any allowed outside storage for trailers or campers or?
There's no.
Everything's gonna be interior.
What, what's the, what's the security at the entrance? Is that gonna be a keypad or?
It's gonna be an overhead door.
Okay.
Be a man door too, probably.
Oh, no, I mean, when you're going in from the, to get in, maybe I missed that.
To get into the front.
It'll be gated, right?
It'll be gated, but he's saying to get into the building would be, you would have a key. I guess, I guess either or, but I, I really meant to get into the property. Is it gated where you have to enter the keypad at Patel?
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's an automatic gate?
It, it, once you put in the code to get in.
The gate opens.
Yep.
So that's why you say no one will park on the street. But you could park on the street and walk up to the gate and put in your pin pad and get in.
Well, who's going to want to carry their stuff far away when you got parking spaces right here?
I don't know. I can't say.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be able to tell you that, Rob. I can just say that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
I think that there should be a restriction to proactively say you can't park on Batel.
Yeah, that wouldn't, we wouldn't have any problem putting no parking. Just putting up no parking signs would be fine with us.
I'll ask the same question. I was curious about what the count was for the Ford dealer at the time of the repair. Cause I would think there would be at least 20 cars a day going in there.
I would imagine.
It would have something.
Yeah, more. I mean, you probably have more than that and just the personnel.
Yeah. I will have to tell you that I don't. I am concerned about the height of the building and how it marries up to the rest of the Main Street facilities that are there. Is somewhat of a hodgepodge. But that makes a major difference in what you're looking at.
And that's, I mean, we, we did look at that and that's why we made sure that we are under what was allowed by zoning. Because to have that in your zoning, then you kind of anticipate having it and it's allowed. And if one person comes in, you say, okay, well, that's too tall. And then somebody else comes and they say, we want to be that tall. They say, well, there's no other size. You can't do it either than, I mean, it's allowed. That's the allowable height.
And you at least try to present the building from a design standpoint as a lower profile by visual, you know?
Yeah, I think it's going to, I mean, as far as for what some of the buildings are on East Main Street. I mean, this is going to be a nice looking building.
What is the height?
It's 40, glasses with me. Yeah, it's, it's cut off. I think the height of the building at the eve is 42 feet at the eve.
So you know more than 10 feet per floor? So it's not like this thing is.
Six per floor.
Okay.
It's flat roof?
It's going to be half and 12 roof pitch, so 120, so 16 halves, 30 inches. So at the ridge, and you don't, and you don't really see it yet, it's a little under 48.
Forty-seven point nine five, it says.
And what did you have in mind for snow removal as this young lady?
That would all, the, the snow would all be taken and put over the curb past here. But there again, like we said, there's probably a distance from the parking spaces to the side property line. It's probably somewhere in the area of about 40 feet at its closest point. Here, maybe 25 feet away. So there's more than enough room to put snow.
This site similar to say restaurant spaces and so forth. If there's tremendous snow, you're going to get taken out of there.
Yeah.
At some point.
We do it now. There's a lot less asphalt. So right now, when we plowed it, we plowed basically from East Main Street all the way to the property line. So you would get giant snowbanks. We were running the plow trucks. I don't know, what is that, 200, 300 feet? There's a lot less asphalt now, so there's a lot less snow to move.
And the pavement was a lot closer to the property line than what this is also.
And the climate was made, you know, to, to some of the space underground. Obviously, this is conditioned space underground.
Yeah.
Isn't beneficial to that scenario, plus water infiltration and so forth, correct?
Exactly.
How tall is the, how tall is the Ford building across the street?
That's a good question. There's a portal on it. I don't know. It would have to be, it's pretty darn tall. It has to be 35, 40 feet, that big metal portal on the front of it. And I know my Toyota portal, a little down the street, has got to be in the 35, 40 foot range, I would tell you.
Anybody else have any comments? You got, you got to come back up, ma'am. Name and address again for the record. Sorry.
Can't hear anybody back there.
Thank you.
Cheryl Zukowski, 24 Batel Street. What is all these numbers? 197, 186?
Those are the, the grades. So this is elevation 198, elevation 197. And that shows you how the water goes here, comes into this catch basin right here. So this is all curbed around there. So the water is directed right from here to here into this catch basin.
Yes, because it does go down like a bank over here, but over here, this is all flat. So what happens with the water that's in that?
This is just grass now. That's why I was saying this light line right there, that's where your pavement is right now. See this light line?
Line, yeah. Where's the pole? It shows on one of those maps. Is that the pole right there? Cause that pole is not that far from my property.
Yeah, it's, it showed, I think you can see it better on the other one. This is all grass now. It's no longer pavement and it's pitched, pitched this way. I think what you, what the way it was, if you look at the existing grades right now, you can see it like this. So that water used to come in off of Batel and all go down this way.
Well, there's also the grass and it does come on there because this is much higher and it slopes down.
Yeah, there was no curbing on this. This is all going to be curved.
So all that, you know, all that sloping is grass, but it all comes down and then it goes right in here and then it goes in my backyard.
Yeah, but there was no curb here. So anything that came down the pavement was just able to go that way. That's why we've got a curb on here. That prevents the water.
Just a regular street curb, you know, that round kind of thing?
Yep.
I'm not sure that that's quite enough, but like I said, the, the drainage right here, I've seen it as water, you know, coming down, especially when we have a lot of that rain. I mean, it's like a river coming down this grass thing. And because it slopes, because Batel Street is higher, it comes down just like a river. It comes right into this opening right here and comes into my backyard. Because down in here, the level is, it's higher again.
Yeah, see, this is all going to be, there's a curb all along here now. So the water can't sheet flow down through here.
Well, actually the town took out most of that curbing. It's not there anymore because I used to have some.
Back in.
They're going to build.
Okay.
Going to go back in, so that'll direct the water. And now it's going to channel, if it does come down here, the only place it can channel is into here.
And that's the only drain, drain that you have right there?
No, there's going to be a yard drain over here and a catch basin over here.
No, I'm worried about drainage over here. I don't, I think you need another like, what do they call them? To go in the ground, you know, where it's just down in here, because this is all sloped. Are you changing that slope at all?
No. The grades, the grades go right to where they are right now.
And that's my concern, because the grades right now make the water go down into my property. Somehow or another, it, it's, it, because like I told you, it's not the same level. It's higher up here. It comes down. And over the years with all the water and stuff like that, it's just sunken even in more. So it comes down here and it comes right, right into here.
We could put a yard drain right here, but you're going to see a drastic reduction in the water that comes off here. Cause this was all paved. It's not going to be all paved.
So where, where are you pointing just for our reference?
If. So we would put a yard drain if you look where it has the bearings on the property, the 26, 10, 0, 0, I think it's 212.32. If we put a yard drain between the property line and where the edge of the pavement is and put it right in there.
I got you.
At least you could capture some water and then tie it into.
So it looks like you got, it looks like right in front of that 212, you have a little, little tiny depression. That's a depression, right?
Yeah, that's what, that's what it looks like. There's not a.
That current, that's current, current grades, right?
Yeah, the current grades are the lighter ones and then the darker ones are the proposed.
Okay.
So I would say that's probably, you see a 195 with the size of that, that's probably a 195 low spot.
Well, so. So maybe even a, a small rain garden with a yard drain.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll look nice too.
Something more to capture it. Like I said, wherever that is.
Rain gardens typically are like a depression that has a few, like nice looking plants in it and.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Cause this right here, this solid black line where, well, it's got a few dashes in it. That is the line, property line, is that?
Yeah, right here is the property line.
Okay.
Right there is your driveway.
Right, I see the driveway and some of the property is mine. But right now there is some that's grass and you're showing that you're doing more towards taking away some of that grass.
No, the, the pavement's just here. This, this is all grass. So just the only piece that gets taken away is here, but all of this asphalt is now all going to be grass.
Okay, right in here, just that one grade. And why is that still staying asphalt?
Because they need, they require that a, a truck, like a delivery truck could make the maneuver on the property. They don't hunt them back in and off of the road.
Okay, okay, okay. It, it's just a back end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the actual loading spaces are right there. That's just to maneuver.
Right in, so they're going to be going in this direction to go into the building?
Yep.
Okay, and then, so all this is pavement here because it's either parking or that backup graded area.
Yep.
And is, like I said, there's a little bit of a hill there, you know? Is it flat?
Nope, this is all going to pitch this way away from your.
The asphalt will pitch into that sediment. Okay, okay. Water free.
I don't blame you.
Me too.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Has there been any, any conversation with Phil Kozlak, the neighbor? As far as these trees that are in question that may be getting trimmed and compromised?
We did, we talked to him about them, because I said to him, I said, what do you?
Talk it to the mic, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I talked to Phil and I said, well, the ones that come over to property line, we're going to have to cut. You're a tree guy, you'll know better than me what you want to do. There is a buffer there. He could leave them if he wants to. The back of his is actually open there. So my old abandoned building used to be the back of his and it's open there. He was actually looking for more of a barrier in the back. That's a conversation we had a couple times.
Right.
This is just a.
Any other commissioners have any comments, concerns? You got a couple?
Yeah, so we, we have some proposed language, of course, that I read in. But based on our conversations, there's a, there's a few things we should probably address. And one is replacement of any trees along that, that happen to die or, you know, we want to keep that buffer, just like you said, along that, along that property boundary.
Okay.
We should establish some hours of operation. We don't want to, I, I think hem you in too much, so I'm, I'm suggesting 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Just to have a reasonable, you know, length of a day here. No parking signs installed. We'll, we'll have to talk to the, the police traffic because it's a local road. But no parking sign installs, you know, as part of the development. And rain garden slash yard drain in the eastern edge of the, eastern edge of the property. Oh, sorry, western edge of the property.
Yeah, I would like to add though, I want that. I want to, in the lease agreement or rental agreement, I'd like to see the hazardous waste clarification and make sure that they sign.
Yeah, everything's going to be electronic, but I'll make sure it's in the actual.
I want, I want people to sign your name to it.
I get it.
Just to me, I mean, just so you're aware of it, do you want us to put that note on our sheet SP1?
On the final plans, yeah.
Okay, yeah, just so it's part of the record.
Yeah, and these other things like hours of operation, you can just add it in the notes that, you know, we, we could go over that, but.
Hey, one other question. So on the agreement that you're going to have customers sign, can they do short-term rentals? Like can they come in and just rent something for a month?
Could be up to a month. Everyone that I talked to said most of the time it's an 18-month gig is the average or whatever it is. Sure, I think you can do a month and go.
That's just going to create more traffic though, if you're going to do short-term rental like that.
I think it's an average, right? So some people probably stay 10 years, some people probably stay a month and the average is 18 months. So I, I think.
But it's not going to be an option, I guess. Is that something you're going to have as an option?
Sure, yeah. If, if someone wanted to rent by the month, I'm sure they could. Usually, and especially they do some kind of promotion by the first month free, when you get three months or something. It's like joining a gym for a month. Usually you don't do that. Usually it's a six-month year commitment. You do a month, sure. Remember selling a house, I needed a storage unit for 60 days. But I don't think that's as common and that's not our game plan. And everyone we talk to that's currently doing it is saying 18 months is, is a lot more standard.
I know there's been some comment about if this doesn't work out, you know, what's going to happen with this building? From my experience in traveling the state, these self-storage facilities are there and they've been there for quite some time, especially the temperature-controlled units.
So we've been in Torrenton for a long time, right? So we own Torrenton Toyota, we've been there since 91. We've bought Ford six years ago. We own the bank next door. That's our neighborhood. I, I want it to look nice. I want the neighbors to have a nice thing. I don't want runoff. I don't, I want everything to be nice and I want to be there for a while. And we're not investing millions of dollars to turn around and say, hey, this fails. If it does fail, we'll find a way to repurpose it, right? The old Ford dealer had a problem, we knocked it down and we're going with storage. So yes, we're not just going to leave a, an acre on East Main Street empty.
So, so I just have two other, two other items that we, that the commission probably should discuss. And that's whether we want to see more information on traffic flow and, and, and if, if the height of the building is a concern. Compared to, compared to other, I mean, it is in a local business zone, so it's compared to other buildings in the local business zone.
I don't mind waiting and finding out a lot more information. We want to do that. He's testified that he thinks his other buildings are somewhere in the 35-foot range. You may have the plans on them, right?
Not of the last, not of the last go around.
Ford one though.
I haven't do it in Ford.
I have the Toyota ones.
Well, back to the height requirement, Jeremy. In that zone, what is the maximum?
50 feet. They're at 40, just short of 48. But it is, it is a special exception, so, so we, you know.
Certainly, we have some input on it.
Thoughts from fellow commissioners? Anybody to look for additional information?
I think it just, I think just because it's been vacant for so long, that it's seems strange to see something that's going to be, you know, 48 feet. But I think it's just because it's been vacant for so.
No, the previous use was a one-story building.
Right, but I mean, but that was short.
But that was kind of the purpose of my question is how high are the dealerships right across the street from there? Cause we really do have to compare it to other local business zone, zone properties. I mean, they're local business lots that border residential lots. I mean, they, we have to be, we have to be reasonable in, in making screening accommodations and, and things, things like that, but.
I think it will affect the, the residents that are on Batel though, as far as sunlight and.
Yeah, in a sense, we have no control over that.
No, I know, but it is, you know, that's concerning.
Right now they're staring at that.
Exactly.
Right, right.
Right.
They've also had an open view for many years because again, there was nothing there.
I mean, if you want verification of the other buildings, you know, the ones he has currently under his ownership and maybe kind of do a brief overview of the, the rest of, you know, some of the other surrounding buildings that are quite high. I know even like the Pizza Palace building is, is quite high.
Yep.
What's Vision Electric? That's a couple, three stories, isn't it?
That's on the other side of the street, right?
Well, yeah. Jason's property.
Yeah.
Isn't that a couple, three stories at least?
Yeah.
Sure, it's at least two.
It doesn't, it doesn't define what a, what, what the area or the neighborhood is, but you know, a reasonable circumference around the, around the proposed building. We don't, we don't define it. It's just harmonious with the neighborhood.
Right.
Right.
But there's not just single feet, just not just single.
Right, and we're talking about the East Main Street corridor, you know?
Yep. And if there's the wall, it takes place on that corridor, it's all local business. Which means you could end up with another proposal for another taller building, at least, you know, to our regulations.
Right.
Well, you're much bigger.
Location.
No.
Donovan Starley, Tom, any input?
Donovan, you want to go first?
Go ahead, Star.
I, I was just going to make the comment that you want to, in any kind of development, you want to at least weigh the equities in terms of you're going to change the look of it, it's going to be different. There's going to be different views from different places when you build something, right? On the other hand, then, so you got that and then you've got the improvement that this project appears to bring in terms of more. in terms of more green space, dealing with maybe some flooding and, and other issues they have had and improving that. So you take away some, some, some part of a view uh, of, of the surrounding area, but you've added something at the same time. Uh. It, it, it looks like the equity is way, way out a, a, and um, and balance each other um, from the plan, so that'd be my only comment.
I look at this as a very low-impact entity for the area. I mean, this could be a fast-food drive-through restaurant. Leaving the East Main Street component open and people are circling around here like they are a couple doors down at one of the other uh coffee shops now. You know, just as a consideration to.
Yeah, next to, next to Marzano's is the, what is it, Chipotle?
Chipotle, right.
No, I buy Starbucks. Look at their drive-through.
Exactly.
They're always busy.
Right.
And, and just a, a point. My husband and I have a storage unit down South Main and whenever we go there, there's never anybody there. Never.
I mean, I, I would imagine when, when, I would imagine when you're doing move-outs like the first of the month.
Right.
Maybe it's, maybe it's a tad bit busier, but I don't see it the.
We've never seen anybody there.
I don't, I mean, I'm at all, like, I go by, there's a couple of projects going on near All-Star. I drive by All-Star all the time. I never see a car in there, maybe one or two.
I have friends that own uh, storage units. And most people, they're in there for years and they never come back.
Well, it's, I am.
They're not visiting the units.
It turns into a Storage War uh, auction.
Well, somewhere down the road, but in the meantime.
Sold off.
You know, his, his uh, my buddy's place is that he says that these units, you know, people don't, they don't come, they don't even visit them. You know, they pack their stuff in, they shut the door and, you know, who knows, three years later, they finally get tired of paying for them and then, you know, whatever, how it gets disposed, it gets disposed. But, you know, people aren't visiting them every day to pick stuff out of them and bring stuff to them or, you know, that's, that's completely unusual.
It is.
I think I would rather see that, this type of building aesthetically than to have a restaurant with me.
Well, and that's the, that's what we could be sitting here listening to
Okay.
as an option.
You know, do you want to have a Taco Bell there?
Excuse me?
I said, would you like to have a Taco Bell there?
Oh. Like I said, this seems very low-impact and aesthetically, the, the architectural renderings are attractive. Probably the most attractive building on, in that corridor at this point. You know, I think that the comment was made, the glass building is getting a little tired looking.
How bright would the lights be in, you know, visually seeing it at nighttime at ten o'clock at night? All floors would be all lit up?
No, because the only.
Corners or something.
The only spot that you're really gonna see light would be on the side facing East Main Street and on the two little corners right from East Main Street. But there's only, all that glass that's there, most of it's what they call spandrel glass where you can't see through it. So there's really only you can see two rows of glass running horizontally across the front. Only one band of that is real glass. And a lot of these places, everything's uh, all the lights are motion sensor anyway, so if at night, nobody's in there.
Rob, is this a typical storage entity where there's no power in the units at all? No lights, no outlets?
There's, I mean, obviously lights in the hallway and everything.
And corridors shining.
But the, above the unit, there's what they call burglar bars to where the HVAC
Is circulating.
It can circulate, but the only outs, outlets that there will be is on each floor, there's three HVAC systems for each floor. Within those units, there will be convenience outlets there, but all the convenience outlets are on locks.
Gotcha.
And there's only a few, but it's really convenience outlets to clean up.
Right. You know, so that being said, John Smith isn't going into his little corner unit and you know, running a grinder or something on an electrical outlet.
No.
That's why we don't want them at night.
Right, yeah.
Evan Lamp and Netflix.
And you're okay with those hours that we chatted about?
So Star, Starley, did you have a comment that, that you wanted to make?
No, it, it just seems like the project is a good project. I don't foresee traffic as a, as a major issue. I think that um, the only concern would be a kind of like what the impact of such a large building to the local community that's not used to having it there would be, um, you know, and then any exterior lighting at night, how would that affect those um homes that are nearby? Um, as long as they're, you know, I understand that you are mostly facing your lighting towards like East Main Street, but then you have that outside parking. Would there be lighting out there? Um, that would just remain on overnight?
How late, how late will those lights be on those? The park, the parking area has some lighting as well, doesn't it?
Yeah, there was uh.
It was full cutoff.
Two light poles.
Yeah, two full, two full cutoff light poles.
But those are all full cutoff where there's no foot handle past the property.
Yeah, so we did have, like with the original
Yeah.
design, we had some issues with, with
Some bleeding.
Some bleeding over the property line, so they were, they were.
They've readjusted how the shields would be on them.
Anyone else?
The, the regulations allow for, for the light to go over the property line at the entrance for, you know, so you can see where you're turning, but um. But that's the only, that should be the only spot.
Well, so.
I'm all set.
Robbie, have anything to summarize your good?
Nothing. I mean, I know there's some concerns, you know, like the heights, like anything else.
Right.
Once it's there, nobody even notices it anymore, but it is, it is a, I mean, we were anticipating allowing people to build that high, so we're not looking for an exception to build higher than what's allowed.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Time is eight seventeen. I declare this public hearing closed. Go ahead, Donna.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception twenty-four dash zero nine in site plan fifteen twenty-one. Applicant Rob Lanchep, Buggazy Building and Engineering. Location thirteen fifty-five East Main Street Assessor Map one thirty-seven Block zero zero two Lot zero zero five. Proposal construction of a seventy-two thousand five hundred square foot mini storage building and in, in local business zone and associated site work with the following conditions and recommendations. One, per WPCA, comments of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the applicant shall obtain a sanitary sewer discharge permit prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, per comments from James Myers of Torrington Water Company on July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Water connection, connections have been retired on this property and the applicant shall obtain new approval for public water connection. Three, per July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, comments from building official Kevin Gillette. The applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project and submit the appropriate plans. Four, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus. Assistant Planner outlined in his July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four review comments regarding landscaping, lighting and signage. Final plans for filing shall show adjustments to proposed lighting on the property and contain a compliant photometric plan. The applicant shall also provide information on acceptable landscaping substitutions. An updated report from the assistant planner on these changes shall be provided to the city planner prior to issuing zoning permits for construction. Five, plans shall be updated to address July thirty, twenty twenty-four comments of Paul Kunson, City Engineer regarding start plan details prior to filing of final plans. Updated city engineer comments shall be required prior to issuing zoning permits for construction. Six, per recommendations of the Architectural Review Committee at their August first, twenty twenty-four meeting, an address identifier shall be in a prominent location on the building facing both East Main Street and Patel Street over the entryway, as well as future freestanding signage. Seven, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained at the property entrance during construction. Tracking on the paved portion of the access drive or public street shall be cleaned at the end of each day during project construction. Eight, in review the standards of section eight point two of the zoning regulations for special exceptions. The Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the proposed use, location and site plan is reasonably protective of the health, safety and welfare of the residents of the project area and the citizens of the city of Torrington for the granting of a special exception approval. Nine, zoning and grading permits shall be required prior to commencing work on the property. An erosion and sedimentation control bond shall be required to be submitted with the grading permit application. Ten, all vehicles displayed for sale on the site shall be removed prior to approval of zoning or grading permits. Eleven, a certificate of special exception shall be filed with the city clerk in accordance with CGS eight dash three D prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits. Twelve, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer stat, stamp and the chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet SP one in accordance with section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission and engineer seal and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work. And the additional um um things that we added are replace any trees along the eastern property line that are damaged or die. Hours of operation, perhaps seven AM to eight PM and no parking sign install. Rain garden slash drain on western edge of property. And also to note hazardous waste agreement in any rental agreement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number four. B, public hearing beginning at seven PM September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen. One forty, Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. One fifty, Church Street Assessor Map, one seventeen Block zero zero six Lot zero zero six. One sixty, Church Street Assessor's Map. One seventeen Block zero zero six Lot zero zero seven. One sixty-eight, Church Street Assessor Map, one eighteen Block zero zero two Lot zero zero nine. Applicant, City of Torrington. Proposal change of zoning map, R six residential to DD Downtown District.
Yeah, we have that, we have that set to open next meeting. That's Christmas Village and surrounding parking lots, the two, the two adjacent undeveloped parking lots.
Is that what's going on there? Is it thing that they're clearing out?
So that's a, that's probably a future plan, but right now, the uh, well, Public Works wants to get it into the, and it makes sense for us, for, for the use itself. It's kind of a staple connection to downtown, so it's, it's uh, currently zoned R six, because I think way back before Christmas Village, there was houses on those, those properties. So uh, so this, yeah, so it's, it's Christmas Village itself and the parking lot next to the railroad track and there's a parking lot and, well, it's, it's just kind of grass, but behind the building, there's a an open lot. Those three are, are being proposed to change to Downtown District
Okay.
for next meeting.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, old business. We have none. Agenda item six, new business. We have none. Seven, correspondence. A, zoning and light violation update.
So everybody should have the, the memo with the, with the updates. There wasn't, there wasn't a lot of change from last month. I just wanted to discuss. I just wanted to discuss two, two items. Um, just to update people. One is ten fifty East Main Street. Uh, that was kind of an ongoing site plan violation. Um. The applicant, or the, um, well, the permitee did have, and it had until August fifteenth to complete the work on the property. Um. Sidewalks are currently being installed, but there's still a whole bunch of work that needs to go on, on the property, including handicap accessibility and a few other things that have not been done yet. Um. So I have to consult with Corporation Council on how to proceed um, on that.
Jeremy.
Yep.
On that, I don't know if you noticed, but they, they poured the sidewalk. I went by there today and they pulled it all out.
I didn't, I didn't notice that.
You certainly pulled it out because it looks like they're doing it in sections. Some was.
No, the, the sections that were poured were gone.
Really?
Yeah, this morning when I went by. I was like, what? Wait a minute.
Somebody walked on them or?
I don't know. Well, uh, it's, it's.
I mean, it looks like they're gonna continue, but it's just funny that somebody poured them all. Poured, you know, they hopscopped across and those pieces are gone.
Okay. No, I did not notice that, but I will, I will take a look at it.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Um. And the other piece, if, if you remember, um, a few months ago at least, we talked about three, three, five, zero, Winstead Road. That's the remember, we were talking about a potential agreement with the recycling, the, the Mountain Top Recycling Yard. Well. Uh, it looks like no agreement's going to happen. Um, so we were just kind of reverting to enforcement on the, on the project. And a soil scientist um and representatives from Mountain Top went to the inland wetlands meeting last night. Um. And it, it, from, from what I'm told from Nate, it sounds like it's gonna take the bulk of the fall and probably the beginning part of the winter for them to do just the wetland survey work on the property. Um. Problem on our end is they're continuing to operate without a, without a processing um, a two-year, you know, processing approval. So I wanted to sort of talk to the commission about how they want to, how they want to proceed with this. My, my feeling here is the, the wetland, the wetland commission last night did not really require them to stay out of what we call the upland review, review areas, the that the areas that are supposed to have permitting
Yeah.
um, to operate. Uh. This commission, on top of not having an approval, doesn't have a wetlands report to move forward with. So, I mean, there's, there's two questions here. One, do we just allow them to continue operating while they're getting a plan together through the bulk of the winter? I think it sounds like before we're gonna see them before us. And B, do we, do we tell them you can't encroach on any of the regulated areas without, without us having a wetlands report on file? And you have to somehow block those areas off to stay out of them.
Well, that's gonna be burden on enforcement because they're gonna have to watch what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Can't go by what they say.
Yeah. And essentially, we, you know, we're still, we're still, it's still I don't, I don't even know how to put this, um. Enforcement, but with them moving with professionals, do we, are we comfortable allowing them to continue to work in there while they're getting design done?
Are they staying out of the compromised areas?
Not at this point, no. And that's, and that's the other question is, do we have them somehow block the areas off? That's gonna, it's seventy-five feet from the entire basically perimeter, because their perimeter is essentially the, the, the marsh. So.
Well, doesn't that, doesn't that make the most sense to regulate that they can't dump it?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, it's, it's, it's not, I don't know, it's, it's not so much, I mean, there's been some slow encroachments and that's why we're in this.
Yeah.
That's why we're in this issue.
Continue with the encroachments is what I'm saying.
Well, mostly now, now mostly it's, there's no stockpiling there, but it's just where all, all the trucks drive around. You know, around the perimeter to, to work on the piles that are kind of in the, the processing piles that are kind of in the middle of the property.
Because it was their intent to kind of get this back to where it should be and get rid of it.
Well, this is what we're, this is what our order was. You've, you've filled wetlands, so you need to restore them.
Right.
And then, and then come to us. We need a wetlands report before we could even issue that two-year, that two-year permit for processing. So we're, we're waiting for the wetland, whatever the wetland commission does regardless.
So they don't have a permit now at all?
No, they had an old, they had a previous permit. They've never had a permit for processing, which I, which kind of baffled me. But um, they had a wetlands permit. Yeah, Tom, yeah, yeah, Tom, you were, you were involved.
I was on inland wetlands. We did a site walk there for the same issue. I don't know, fifteen years ago?
Yeah, it was that long ago. The, the the state, the state statute changed a little during, we, we had a couple of downturns and they automatically extended permits for a while.
Yeah.
But the permits expired, it still expired a few years ago for, for wetlands on the property. But what, what, even after we, even, even after the wetland commission gave them a permit, they filled, they, you know, probably a slow creep, but they filled wetlands.
Yeah. Well, that, that seemed to be, even back then, that was what was going on. It was just, you know, we keep taking an inch, you know, and nobody really says anything and.
Yeah, probably nobody was overseeing it.
Right, and the property, you know, you gotta go into the property to see anything. It's.
Well, my guess is that if you want to stop the encroachment, you're gonna have to go in and mark it.
Right.
So that you can easily see that's, that they're staying away from it.
And monitor it too.
Yeah, that's the point.
Well, it's physi, physical barriers, I think, are the only thing that is gonna work and that was. Yeah, the wetland commission didn't go as far as ordering that, but we can, because we don't have a wetlands permit. So we can say, our enforcement says you can't be in there, because we need, we need
I'm in favor.
We needed affirmative, affirmative report.
We should do that, you know, when, that's, that's something we should do.
Yeah.
Well, if you put this in, in, uh, you know, with the quarry on, on Winston Road and the issues we had there that they didn't, you know, there's sort of a little track history going on here. That they're not really following the rules.
Right.
You know, how long do we let them do it until we say, no, done, cease and desist, stop?
Right. So, you know, I mean, I think, I think the discussion I just wanted to have tonight is, are we okay as long as we keep them out of the, you know, out of that wetlands regulated area, allowing them to while, at least while they're, as long as they're engaged with a with a profession, well, let's do it.
As long as they're moving in the direction of correcting the situation, then all we want to make sure is that they don't encroach Right.
Any further.
Any farther than they already have.
We'll, we'll relay the fact that they're, that they're in, they're in violation, but we're going to abate the, the order until, and as, as long as they're not, as long as they're at least seventy-five feet away from any wetland.
Right.
And they're moving forward with the plan.
And moving forward with the
Yeah, great. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can always, oh, good.
Can we get a copy of those reports from the soil scientist?
Yeah, so I was going to say we can have regular meetings. I mean, we can say we want twice monthly meetings, you know?
So you can see private.
Even if it's a five-minute phone meeting, you know?
Absolutely.
And I can report, I can report back to the commission on those.
Yeah.
Even, you know?
So now I also heard that, and I don't know that it's true, but are you getting close to foreclosing? I heard there were a couple of properties that you might go ahead to foreclose, right?
I haven't, so I'm, I'm a bad person to ask, because I haven't been to any blight meetings, and you're talking about just blight in general. I haven't been, I haven't been, I haven't been to any meetings, so I'm out of the loop.
Yeah. Okay, well, all right, then I'll
So, uh,
I'll check with Nate.
So we, you know, as you know
Ashley would.
Yeah. We've been without a secretary, which we're hoping to fill very quick for the, for a few months. So somebody's got to hold the office down. So it's been me. I haven't gone to the blight meetings.
Okay, fine.
Uh, unless, yes, if nobody else had any other questions and any of the
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number seven, B, Lover's Lane Solar Project Discussion. Just for the public information, this is not a public hearing. There is no testimony taken at this meeting. You want to
So we, yeah, we had a, we had a brief, kind of a brief introduction to the, you know, what's going on there last meeting. The, the project's been submitted to the Connecticut Siting Council. Because any, any solar project, and we, we've had experience with a couple of these in other areas of town, of the city, solar projects over one megawatt, we have no local authority to enforce, to permit, to otherwise say what, what can and can't be done there. However, if we, if, if we wanted to, we do have the ability to send in comments while the, while the, the, the hearing process is open at the Siting Council. That process has a, has an October third deadline for us to, for us to put in any comments. You know, when, when we, when we look at this, it, you know, if you, I, I sent the links for everybody to, to kind of go over what the Siting Council. It's generally a well more involved process than, than we would have locally. When the Siting Council refers these applications out, they refer them to about ten or twelve different agencies for, for comment back. What we, I think if we made many, made any comments, really all we're looking at is that they're not really running completely afoul of our, of our P O C D. When, you know, the biggest thing we take objection to is if, if they're doing something that we just don't want to see in the city, in, in terms of our P O C D. Our, our P O C D, you know, one of the goals of the P O C D is to diversify our, our sources of energy. That includes solar, I mean, anywhere, anywhere solar is going to go in the city, it's, it's going to be near somebody's development. The other, the other two we just dealt with within the last five years are near, are near homes. In the, in the vicinity of homes. So I think, you know, at least my position in, in reviewing this is, and, and I can compare this very closely to the, to the, the one that went up, and it's ten times as big up in, the one up in, on the Litchfield line. Yeah. Highland Avenue Rossi. We're keeping very close eye on that project. We're doing regular inspections there. The, um, the Northwest Conservation District is actually the monitor that this, that deep has for, for the, for the erosion control monitoring. So we're in regular communication with, with them, and we work closely with them on other projects. So even though we don't have enforcement responsibilities or permitting responsibilities, we're still watching these sites. And they are very good about walking, you know, having us walk the, you know, our staff walk the property with the, with the Conservation District staff. So, I mean, unless after some, after, you know, other people have looked at it, if he, if anybody has any other, anything else to add, I, you know, most of the concerns that we would have with a, with a, uh, with a plan that we would review are being, I, I say, after, after looking at a few of these projects, even more closely scrutinized by the, by the state agencies than, than we typically would with the experts we have come in, come into our local meetings.
So I know there's some documents, Jeremy, and some signature pages and so forth.
Yep.
Just as a recommendation for these individuals, they should be touching base with the Siting Council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or any concerns and
Yep, and, and I've, and I've read, I've read through, you know, the, the the concerns that are, that are on this, they're
Right.
There's, there is a lot of mention of, of, you know, local zoning codes and, and the, and the city's plan and all that. We just don't have any local, we don't have any local control, so we can't call the Siting Council and say, this is what the Planning and Zoning Commission wants. Their planning, planning and zoning is, is a, is a, is allowed by the state legislature. And the legislature has also preempted local zoning for, for energy development projects and communications projects.
Cell towers and
Yeah, and communicate, that's why, yeah, communications projects. They intentionally did that. They give, they give zoning local powers, but only, but only within a framework and to, and to an extent. So, um, I, I agree that, that I have concerns over the, the pitch and the, and the slope on the property and and stormwater control. I, I had a, I had a pretty lengthy meeting with the, with the city engineer, and the design, he has no issues with the design. So whether it's built property and maintained properly, that's, that's for post-construction monitoring. So that's, that's as far as I can go. That's where I stand. Yeah, and that's right, and that's why we, we kind of fill in the gaps with our own drive-bys, you know?
I mean, they have responded. They've been slow, like the one up, the one up by the middle school is pretty nasty for a while. It's not, it's a lot better right now.
Yeah, and, and to be honest, we didn't do, we were, it was during our staff transition, so we weren't doing kind of our, our typical routine inspections on that one.
That is just pathetic.
Right. Right, well, we do, we do it because they're going to miss, they're going to miss things, and we're going to, you know, we, we've caught, especially up and, up on the the Highland Ave project, we've, we've caught some things a few times and said, you know, you want to, can you please come out tomorrow and walk the site with us? And they're, they've been, it's, it's not, it's not, it's the, the Siting Council or the applicant doing the monitoring. It's a third party. It's a third party completely out of the, out of the process monitor. So they, you know, when we call them and say, you need, you, you're going to want to come look at this, they're like, oh, okay, I'll meet you out there tomorrow. So
Think that they would have standards
Yep.
And, and be good neighbors.
Yeah.
But it seems like you're chasing them all the time.
Yeah.
Hey, hey.
Yep.
Really, it's
Yeah.
They're ugly.
Well, the, um, the project, the, the, you know, the Highland Ave project, we even had to send up, made us send up Public Works, because they were tearing up the roads and messing, messing up the cities, the city streets. You know, like, you don't, you, you certainly don't have the right to, to
Right.
mess up stuff off the site.
Right.
You know?
Right.
So, so, uh, Public Works actually shut down one of the roads and said, no more trucks through here. So they had to find alternate routes.
That's been a touchy situation too, because it's split in two towns.
It is, yeah. Right. And I don't know, of course, I don't know how Litchfield addresses it, but they're, they're, actually, they're mostly, I mean, they're gravel roads in Litchfield, to an extent, so.
And the, the the landscape for Highland Avenue Rossi Road, there wasn't a tremendous amount of tree clearing. Those were, a lot of them were meadow.
There was actually quite a bit, yeah, but they were, they were they were fields. There were a lot of old farms. There were a lot of hayfields, but
It wasn't all, it wasn't treed a lot, is it? As much?
Well, there was a lot of tree clearing.
Lover's Lane is a lot of tree clearing.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, there was a lot of tree, there's more than you would think on, on Highland, because they, they there was, there's a lot of hayfield there, but it, but all the perimeter, there's a lot of tree clearing around the, around the perimeter. So.
But you did say they were at least on the, if, if they were to abandon it or if it was to be expired, like
There's, they had to take it apart. So I read the de, I read the decommissioning.
Yeah, the decommissioning now is a little more expensive.
Yeah, so they're, they used to allow, uh, they used to allow them to cut them at, at ground level or just below ground level.
Leave the metal.
Yeah, they don't allow that anymore. The whole, the whole thing's got to be pulled out and restored. So, um, the other thing that, that we're, we're mostly concerned about with these is farmland soils. And there was a, there was a report from the Department of Ag on the, on the farmland soils that, that that there's, there, you know, where the, where the project's going on, there isn't, there isn't sensitive farmland soils.
Hey, the commissioners, how many comments on that?
So the, you know, the, the question I have is, do we, do we? I mean, I, I, I find it hard for the, for the commission.
We have no jurisdiction.
Well, if I, even, even to send a letter of objection, because again, it, it, it meets our P O C D. And if it came to us, the design, the design is, is valid. I mean, again, it's got to be monitored.
Well, obviously, some of this paperwork, not knowing all the channels where this has ended up, do we just take a packet of this and say this was, you know, brought to our attention and?
Yeah, this, there was already one.
And the other one, when we did the middle, the, the one by the middle school, it was the same situation, that, you know, we had no jurisdiction on that.
No. We al, we always have the right to comment, and really that's
What we, was we did comment
Yeah.
Terms of how we wanted it screened. We suggested it. We had no power to make it happen.
Right.
But we worked with them, because the neighbors were saying, I don't want to stare at these solar panels.
Yeah.
They did put up, I mean, I bet they're small, but they put up some some shielding, some abrevities, which hopefully grow big enough to black everything. So I think that if there's anything in there that we can put weight on, you know, where we can add this, this, this particular board's weight to it and say, hey, look, we want you to take some consideration here for this or that, or whatever the
Yeah, because there's, there's some real concern from the the neighboring property owners.
Yeah, the, um, so a couple of things that I, a couple of notes that I made that if we were to make comments, I would say implementation of, of sound, sound and visual barriers that was, that was in here.
I mean, we advocated for those, those particular residents as
Oh, and the, and
So I think we should continue to do the same thing as the board. Can't do anything about what they're going to do in terms of citing it. If that's it, we're stuck with it. But, you know, the least we can do is advocate for some of the concerns that the neighbors might
If we had, if we had a local application or for a special exception, we would require
Yeah.
Twenty-five foot buffers of screen, of screening and, of screening and buffering at the, at the, at the minimum, so.
So I think we did go through those notes and, and where we can, you know, put a little bit of weight on them, then throw them at them and say, hey, we want you to consider doing something to help this out.
So, just so we don't have to wait until the next meeting, I can, with the, with the commission's permission, I can put together a memo for, for both, um, for both the Siting Council and for City Council. And just have everyone, you know, okay it.
Yep.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Will there be mention about the wildlife that will be disrupted?
So Deep's, Deep's already looking at that for, for through their natural diversity database.
Yes, they're going to have more.
Yeah, there was, there were wood turtle, there's wood, wood historic wood turtle, um, you know, records, and, and they have to come up with a plan to mitigate disturbance. So.
Jeremy, once that document is approved from us commission members, is it available to the public? That component?
I can, yeah, well, it'll be, so, so I'm going to put this, I'm going to send the same document to council, which will get posted on council's agenda.
Gotcha, okay, just FYI, folks.
It's good, it'd be for next week's, uh, next Monday.
October sixth, you have to have everything in?
Right, and, and I'll, but I have to have it done, like, by Monday, because, because council's meeting Monday, yeah. So I'll probably have it done before the end of Friday.
That's right.
So I could get it for, to council. And they'll, they will post it with the council's agenda.
All right, and now, again, it could be as simple as an email. You know, you accept this, you're in favor of it.
So what I'll do is I'll send that email and everyone just communicate directly back to me, not, not to, not as a group.
Right.
You know? Just don't, 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 yeah, don't reply all, so we're not having a meeting outside a meeting.
Exactly.
Don't reply all.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's not a, it's not a public hearing.
Sorry. All right, good. At the time is eight forty-seven, moving on to agenda item number eight, adjournment.
Done. Okay.
All those in favor? Posed, so moved. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, we can't, because we'd be breaking public hearing laws.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's right.
Whether, whether I wanted to or not.